Halt. Present. Armed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Order. Armed. Halt. Armed. Armed.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Boarder.
Ms. Alberts.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
We're here.
Mr. Hawley, here. Mr. Giannelli?
Here.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Karat?
Here.
Mr. Matrino. Ms. Malinero. Mr. Petrofessa?
Halt.
Mr. Santos?
Here.
Okay, recognitions. Tonight is a treat because we get to recognize one of our own board members. So, I'm recognizing Gladys Cooper for receiving the Excellence in Education recognition and the NOACB Foundation Freedom Fund Dinner on October 21st for her years of service on the Board of Education. Twenty-one years. Was it twenty-one years?
This by November would be like twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years. Oh, that's right. That's right. Wow. So, I know a couple of people attended the dinner. I know Farley went and Dr. Sal went. So, Farley, you want me to just give a two-minute little thing on how it was?
Sure.
What were your thoughts on it?
Sure. So, the dinner was great. It was a great way to really give thanks to someone who's given so much to the district and to whom we all look up to for her years of service. It was a lot of fun, otherwise. I think we laughed a lot during the dinner. So, and Dr. Sal, you did as well. But it was great to have the recognition of not, you know, not just the Danbury Board of Education, but of your service there, Gladys. Congratulations to you.
Just to note, I think it was sixtieth of the year, but it was a sixtieth year anniversary as well.
It was the sixtieth year of the National Association for the Union of Color.
It was at the Danbury Chapter.
Danbury Chapter.
Danbury Chapter. I was impressed with the advocacy that they talked about and Dr. Coleman, who's the executive commissioner of education, spoke about this, about all behind-the-scenes stuff that we don't see for advocating for all kids, not just for people of color, for equality and equity. And he was a voice out there when there weren't many people out there being around. So, he made a point of that. So, I really felt to be there and probably just to owe him a word. Congratulations. She might bring her grandkids, but that ain't it, right?
I just want to say on a separate note, like when I was first on the elected to the Board four years ago, I used to sit next to Gladys. And for the first year, she was like my, she was my teacher because she was telling me what to say, what not to say, kind of like, you know, because I kind of say whatever I think and I really, she's the first one. I really didn't realize that they were being videotaped a couple of times. So, she kind of schooled me on a couple of things to do and I appreciate that. For the first year, she was a big help to me. So, thank you. And thank you for your continued support for our kids in Danbury. I appreciate that. All right. Let's see. So, this is another good one. So, the music department, I'll think. We have some, we have people, Jill?
Yes, Jill Russell was right.
Oh, okay. I didn't see her walking. Is she there? Oh, okay. So, why don't you, instead of me reading it, why don't you come up and tell us what it's all about, what transpired?
Um, yeah, it's been a busy year. So, we're very, very busy. We, um, we were fortunate.
Jill, would you turn that on and just hit lock?
There's a lock button.
There's a button in the basket that's written on.
Usually those are on before people sit down.
Hello?
Hello.
So, we were approached by the VH1 safety music, probably around December of last year, and they were looking to build a tour of school district in Danbury. They had already done a building of brick home schools and had even made a public school. So, we were looking like the next group they wanted to commit to and required a proposal situation. So, also we asked for complete district data or enrollment, inventory, title one information or staffing information, what kind of programs we offer, scope and sequence and curriculum, just about everything available. With that proposal, we also had a meeting with Dr. Sal, Dr. Glass, and Ms. Martino. Then that led for them to decide if they wanted to commit and actually see our schools, and they did. So, they came in for a tour of three or four of our elementary schools and one of our little schools in January or February. And then we came back here and had kind of a thought of meeting. And a few weeks later, we got an email that they were just accepting one of our schools for our first year partnership, but they took three schools, which is really awesome. So, we have three schools, Moore Street, South Street, and Park Avenue that received thirty-five thousand dollars in instruments. We include three strums, trumpet, trumpet, all radio, it's like Christmas in August. And we also got music stands, curriculum, and it also came with professional development, which our teachers who presented Monday morning did that. That afternoon, we were in the jungle, St. Ash, tour had fixed things, but it's a lot of that. That's what we did with VH1. Then we were approached by Little Kids Rock. And I thought this was all a joke too. I hope these people are pretty sure this is really happening. So, Little Kids Rock approached us and they, if you're not familiar with it, it's a great organization that's been around for probably over ten years. And they teach modern bands, really tap into our cultural development, education of our kids, play guitars, electric guitars, basses, drums, synths, contemporary pop, these kind of things. So, there were six of us that got trained last year. We got training, each five thousand dollars, little more than that, instruments for our classrooms. We were able to get our whole district trained this year. So, they're coming in November 7th to train the entire music department. And then they're going to be coming in January 26th. There's two trainings they do, they're training in. So, from there, we will have every single teacher have their instruments for Little Kids Rock as one of our own schools. And that's terminated, I think, over eighty, maybe a hundred thousand dollars to total. So, we did that. Then we got another email from the state that we had to apply to be a model curriculum district. And so, we did. And we were accepted as well. They were one of the six school districts based on dirrups and whatnot that were accepted as part of music curriculum for us to do some music in it. Then we wrote probably five or six units of study. We were coached by coaches for this. And then we had to present at the state conference and to the state workshops. And we presented a lot of performance classes. There was a whole room, people walked around and a lot of questions. There was a lot of really great conversation with colleagues and whatnot. It's been a busy year of music.
All right, so, and the presentation moment was fantastic. I did get a chance to thank you personally, but Jill spearheaded the whole, basically the whole project and got it done. And it was fantastic. It was a huge win for Danbury. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming. And that's a lot to thank.
Yeah, it was great to see the kids, you know. Farley was there, Fred was there, you know, the staff, Jill and everybody. It's a really good thing to see the things that you hear about in action. It's a lot different when you actually see it than you hear and you hear about it. But, you know, it was, I mentioned Farley, who's new to the Board and, you know, we just kind of looked at you and said, this is what it's all about. I mean, Board meetings aside and all that stuff, it's to see what, you know, how the kids react to it and how much joy they get out of it. So, thank you very much again.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Did you have a little quasi-presentation you want to tell the Board about?
Um, sure, yeah.
We had to get in all that money flow out of you to do that.
Oh.
Is that okay?
It's Lucy pictures.
Yeah, she wanted you to at least see some of that.
Sure, everyone, definitely.
Sal said to keep it short and symphonic, so symphonic is not short. So, I have a little bit of a...
You're gonna put up here.
Actually, if I could, we have actually some of our music department here tonight. We've Connie Swanson at Broadview Middle School, Keno. Mary Peters, who's at Broadview Middle School and Danbury High School.
Come on up here.
Please come on up and introduce yourself.
Right around here. We don't get to see much. My chorus teacher in Broadway, huh?
That's a party, yes.
There you go.
I'm Connie Swanson. I'm a choral director and music teacher at Broadview Middle School.
I'm Mary Peters. I teach orchestra at Broadview Middle School and Danbury High School.
And I'm Tom Memory. I teach, I co-teach with Jill, and we teach sixth grade chorus, eighth grade chorus, and general music at Broadview Middle School. These guys.
And I'm Peter Overy. I teach general music at South Street and King Street in Jamaica.
Tom and Pete also were in Little Kids Rock training. They came on Saturday to do that training, but Mary as well. So, they're both participating in new schools. So, all right, well, this will be nice for themselves.
You might even need to use that mic, just so that the audience can hear you.
Sorry, I should use my teacher voice, right? Yeah, sorry. So, we have twenty-eight pre-teen through twelve certified music staff members in our district. We have a pretty robust program. We can look at the breakdown of how things work. We do have band and string instruction at the elementary level, tool and chorus and general music. That goes all the way up into preschool. At the middle school, students will start to see percussion classes and theater arts at lots of our little schools. And also at Danbury History, we'll see it gets a little more, it's a word I'm looking for. Gets the pillar whirling, exact from what they're doing. And there's a lot more at high school as well on this. The VH1, we see the Music Foundation, this is all things actually over there, that's totally the strings that we got. We purchased, we purchased them at cost, but we were going to actually buy them. For example, it was three hundred ninety-nine dollars, but we were able to get it through the rent for two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, it's a little bit of a bit coming over that.
Jill, can't hear words.
All right, sorry, sorry. So, um... Hello? Hello?
No, Jill, do me a favor.
I'll stand over here.
Come up, come up here. This one works. There you go. Have a seat.
Is this better, boss?
We should get a grant for some technical equipment here.
So, moving on from VH1, we, this was what it looked like in August. Thank you so much to Rob Anderson, who was surprised by NASA's drug deliveries and delivered them safely to all of our schools. It was again like Christmas in August. So, we went around and did a lot of the packing. VH1 put some of these instruments on other social media sites, these pictures. Mr. Morrow, who's actually put together all of the standard payment, which is not an easy task. If you didn't see these pictures already, these are from the check presentation the other day. Next to me is the executive director of VH1. And we have Jacqueline Monroe, who's the national program director, who we worked with, Dr. Sal. And Richard White, who's Spread Music Now. The check says fifty thousand dollars, because even though the grant was a hundred and eighty, Spread Music Now, which is located in Grand Canyon, Connecticut, they gave fifty thousand dollars to that. So, they're the reason we were able to get that for the score. So, those pictures. There's all the kids. They did such a phenomenal job, the teachers and the kids. It was really amazing to watch them in action. And then we had Mike from St. Ash, he came and did a whole run-through of every instrument and probably solving and fixing everything. It was pretty, it was pretty unique. We haven't had that before. And then, the best part was that Mr. Martino and I got to meet Queen Latifah. We were invited to turn it up to twenty, which was a VH1 celebration a few weeks ago. And she's not at least the first of the other person, but we know she is. Looking at our instrumental enrollment, I did put a purple piece of paper down in front of you, that is our full district enrollment. But what I wanted to highlight was what this grant was able to do for us. Last year, Moore Street School Band had seventeen students. This year, they have forty-five, thanks to those guys' grant instruments. South Street Band had eleven. This year, they have twenty-six. And Park Avenue, like from forty to seventy. That's just bands. We did only purchase band instruments because you have to choose between one or the other. But the string numbers are equal, which is impressive. So, then Little Kids Rock, again, professional development, really, really wonderful way to talk about music in a second language, approximation, scaffolding, reaching all the students. Kids responded really, really well to this program. And this is just a state information, program director. Our, what we have done and what we continue to do for our mission. And this is Dr. Sal, who's here, came at probably Little Kids Rock for our October PD. He goes to preview, get the staff ready for it. This is Mr. Over's class at King Street. He's working on some guitar stuff over there. And the model curriculum, this is just a breakdown of the units that we did, as well as who the other model district was or what dirrups everybody had to. And that's us, where our teachers, nothing to say personally. And then, so in addition to that, we obviously know that we have students in need, but we also know that we have students that are not at those schools that are in need. So, we were able to develop a key partnership with the Music Writers Center in Danbury and also Medical Music Center. They came down considerably in their rental prices this year for us. Not only did they, that, but we have representatives from both of those organizations that come into our schools weekly to deliver instruments, to make the picking up and bringing to the students, to repair easier. They come into work with teachers. They really, really have done such a great job, reaching out and working with our staff. And it's great to be able to support local businesses and keep those coming and not have instruments purchased out of the outside. So, at least we know we're getting quality instruments, good samples. And I did also give you a performance calendar. Our teachers are very welcoming. Please come into the schools and see the concerts they're doing, whether it's in or facho or the lights on the concerts. And you can contact every school directly, if you'd like to do that way, and whatever dates work for you. We're a pretty, pretty busy group of people. You'll see a lot of elementary teachers do probably between six, eight, some of the ten concerts a year. Our middle schools are so big, I know Broadview, we go nice off because we're so big, we can't fit our own stories. They're pretty creative. They're really enjoy us.
One of the things we've been doing, Jill, is trying to bring together groups. You want to mention tomorrow night? Tomorrow night? You said tomorrow night? Thought it was Thursday night?
Spooktacular.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Spooktacular is happening tomorrow at Danbury High School. You know, I said today. Mary, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, sure. Hello. Okay, so tomorrow is the Spooktacular concert. It's actually the tenth annual Spooktacular. It's at Danbury High School at seven o'clock. The high school choir and orchestra perform. And we also have a group that Broadview Eighth Grade Band with Strings have been combining for the last six years. And this year, we invented the West Side of Strings to join us. And they all come buying together to play one piece or playing a lot stronger than they did this year. There's some very interesting sound effects. All the kids, there's over two hundred performers, they're all being costume on stage. We have a costume contest for the community members around the whole auditorium at the high school. Everybody gets candy when they're reading. It's a great, it's really fun event. So, tomorrow at seven, we're gonna... Oh, yeah, a work pass. I was gonna say.
And just in closing, we just want to thank Dr. Sal, Board of Education, for supporting these programs, for sharing our budget, and staying really real tight. And thank you for keeping your department intact and allowing us to do the things that we do with kids. There's a poll that I saw in the article that sticks out to me. Music does not need to make excuses for itself as if it had no insurance at work. It does not have to dress itself up in test taking robes or mathematical masks. It is deep, powerful human value in all of us who all should be saying so already over that. And Richard White actually spoke to the group on Monday and said that we're all investing in music, but we're investing in harmony for our kids and really, really making the world better for these. So, thank you very much for supporting.
Thank you. Jill, would you turn that light on? I flipped it off.
No one signed up on the public participation? Anyone missed signing up on it? That one signed up on? Okay. Consent calendar.
That the Board of Education approved the items on a consent calendar exhibit seventeen dash one eighteen through seventeen one nineteen as recommended.
Second to my Michael Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Ready, go. Extensions? Okay. All right. Boy, you represent, spotlight your school. West Side Middle School. All right, come on up. A couple of students. Yeah, anyone? I don't want to see her.
Yes, one. Here's a second. Here, not for long.
So, I'm from Massachusetts School Academy. I've done Tennessee.
I'm Tampa, Boston, from seven, eight.
And I'm from six, global studies. We have a presentation for you about our school. There's a video that our teachers...
So, why do I love middle school?
I love middle school because of all the scientific inquiry on it. Because of all the energy.
For all the opportunities for our projects.
We have a great sense of humor.
We love middle school because it's the time to find yourself.
But I love watching the kids grow from sixth grade to eighth grade.
Sixth graders are still very much elementary school students in the way that they are inquisitive, they really want to learn, they're excited still. Seventh graders have a lot of that enthusiasm, but now they're a little bit smarter, a little more engaged. And eighth graders are one step away from high school students, they're basically grown adults, having all that skill and enthusiasm from junior year, but now the maturity and skills necessary sometimes create a really great heart.
I love middle school because I can have the opportunity to encourage students to reach an outstanding...
We like middle school because of highlights.
Students grow up so much, they become independent, and they show us their true colors and how wonderful they are.
Right, is that one of your teachers?
I love school, set a plan. Mister Miller is there, this is love. Walking down the hall, shaking on the walls. I can't wait for students to come to me, get me. I can't wait for students to come to me, get me. Cause I love middle school, one person ain't wrong, baby. I love middle school, come and take it, run with me. Check out all the teachers, they're fresh side. Smart, present, minister high. Heart is up and shining, and they're well-bad. Yeah, yeah, you will study hard, baby, get me. You will study hard, baby, get me. Cause I love middle school, seven girls, seven three. I love middle school, come and take it, run with me. Give them rest, but you've done your best. Yeah, yeah, that's your head, that's my, get me. And we asking questions to your inquiry, get me. Saying I love middle school, history day, and you three. I love middle school, come and take it, run with me. I love middle school, art and expression, baby. I love middle school, come and take it, run with me. I love middle school, thank you, baby, I love middle school, come and take it, run with me. I love middle school, science fair, beautiful, baby. I love middle school, come and take it, run with me. I love middle school, yoga, and progress, baby. I love middle school, come and take it, run with me.
That's why I love middle school.
All right, this is our equation group. The first thing that's on the screen is Salvy, in where students compete for a spot for top color. Second is Science Fair, in which our school is copyrighted for three years. Third one is History Day, where our, our local studies cluster, the history projects on different topics each year. And the fourth one is, like you mentioned, in where our STEM cluster invents creative ideas that they had and they presented to the public. And our last thing is Peace Coasters, and that's a product where we do peace every year. And the thing that all these represent allow our school and give the students the ability to present the public.
So, our academic classes are ELA, math, social studies, and exploration. Exploration is what Jacqueline just talked about. It's an extra core class where we get to do projects.
These are our special area classes. The first one is leadership. This class primarily focuses on college readiness and things in the community that we completed. The second one is visual media, and we're a going to a school that has this class and is led by a working teacher who teaches about fingerprinting and other digital assets and so forth. And the third one is art. And in this class, we learn a lot of many different things. We have a really hard, this is Spanish. We have Spanish learning, which also we're going to a school have that. And we have chorus and dance.
So, our school activities are yearbook club, where students get to design our school's yearbook. We have student council, where students can run or replace in our student government. We have the school play in this year. We're putting on Legally Blonde Junior Musical. We have National Junior Honor Society, which you can apply for in seventh grade. And depending on your grades, you could get in an eighth grade. We have intramurals, where you do after-school sports on Wednesdays. We have jazz fair, which is another after-school activity, where students participate in a jazz group. We have chamber singers that is led by our chorus teacher, Mr. Lewis.
This is our college readiness, that's how we have leadership. And the first thing that we see with the facts is our, what teacher's name, instead of the, the, the teacher's name, and what college they went to. And the second thing is all the parents, those who are hanging in our cafeteria, and they show their names and all of this. And leadership is a class I talked about before. And this is all represented, college readiness. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are you done? Have you honestly spoke for you?
Yes.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Presenters, nice job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
As the board knows, that's probably the roaming population there. We're looking at some, some options there, that the volunteers are working with, uh, with us, and then we have facilities, because we may have to expand it based on, um, that's something under the design now. So, a lot more kids will have experience over here.
A lot more people for the video.
Same teachers though.
Okay, so no other student representatives here tonight?
No.
That's every other month, every other meeting, right?
Yeah, that's what we want to do.
Okay, once more. Okay. Presentation, family and community engagement by Andy. We doing one on the mid-screen?
No.
Oh, good, thank you.
All of you know Andy, Andy's been with the district for a number of years, and, uh, he chose to be, or doctor, ooh. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job guys, thank you. Don't leave me before I got a picture, okay?
Should be on, just hit it.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so Dr. Stahl wanted me to talk a little bit tonight about some of the activities that we've been doing at the center. Uh, the first one I wanted to talk about is, um, I'll pass on the brochure.
Who gave it, who gave it?
Um, the family and community center, we've really taken that building and turned it around, I know Michael and Ralph and a couple other court members have come and seen it. Uh, Mr. Genelli's been bringing his granddaughter to play group. Um, it's really a warm welcoming center, my name comes to it, we're maybe there, Kim is in and out, Joe and, uh, Dr. Stahl. But the exciting thing was, um, the face center has now become a model of state. We, um, a couple weeks back, the statewide, um, family community engagement conference sponsored by crack, and the state department event, uh, we were the workshop, we were part of the workshop presenters. It is also going to be a workshop, a workshop that is going to be done in Cleveland, Ohio, at the national conference too, so Dan, we're putting Dan there on that, which is very, very exciting. So, um, for this workshop, we did a little bit of a different presentation, it wasn't that we stood in front of the people, we sat as a fishbowl, and talked among ourselves about how this, the building went from this old ugly building, and I had a picture from the, the middle of the nineteen forties of the building. Um, so we can look at that and compare today to today, we've come a long, long way in the pictures, um, and how it looks. Um, and then it was myself, um, Kim, Dr. Stahl, Maritza, uh, who is our lead, um, registrar there. We had, um, Estella come from our D F R Cs, and she talked about how we interface as, uh, different components. Um, Marjorie was there from our free and reduced lunch, another really important person on board. Who was there that day? Rick, our, our now moved on director first impression, and our new, um, gentleman Tommy, um, Brasso, has, is filling those shoes well, and learning very quickly that, um, when you think you know all the answers, that somebody else comes to the door and has a different type of question. So, um, I just wanted to share that with you, this is the brochure that I passed out, um, that talks about all the different entities that are in the, um, center. The thing that I think is the coolest, we did change to tagline, to connecting families with schools. And then, um, we made some more changes inside to educate, inspire, and empower families, and we know this year that it's truly working. Through the work that we've done with our free and reduced lunch applications, our numbers are higher than they've ever been, um, at least since I've been here in the district, um, and families are coming for many more needs, and, um, you know, we're not a place to go. It's like, you know, the new restaurant opens in town, and everybody goes to, well, everybody's coming to the face center. Um, the other thing I wanted me to address is, um, summer learning loss a little bit, and I'll do it quickly because I know Ken has a presentation too. Summer learning loss is, um, when children attend no type of program, they don't read during the summer, they have no academic enrichment, they can lose up to two months of what they've learned, um, over the summer. You know, they learn certain, after they're tested in or assessed, and they in June, they come back after having no academic enrichment during the summer, and they can start two to three months behind. Um, they lose two to three months. Um, and so, as a district, we realize that that is really one way that we can start to close and eliminate that achievement gap. So we invited, um, all of the summertime learning providers that we thought we had, so we've got forty-three people that attended, myself, Dr. Stahl, um, my name was with us, um, Judy Coco, who is a, our board president of the family learning center, was there, and then all kinds of community providers. We sensed to have that, sensed that meeting and identified three more. We figured that we're close to, from the surveys that they filled out, of the programs that were there, plus some new people who we have identified, we're reaching only about three thousand elementary kids with summertime learning. So, we have a gap of about twenty-five hundred children, so those are the things that we want to learn. Some of the highlights that came out of the meeting is that, um, there's gaps, people feel that there's gaps in what we're doing, not what we're doing, but as collectively as a field in Danbury, what we're doing. Um, so I just want to run these down quickly, put them in your, your wheelhouse of thoughts, and give us some feedback, um, later on. Um, so, some of the main points are, they would like to see more use of our schools, in different parts of our schools during the summer, so we'll talk about that. Um, more transportation, because they have limits from children getting back and forth, and when I talk about transportation, I see Joe all of a sudden like, I'm not making eye contact, moving, oh no, that's not it. I think this is an opportune time to get with Hart Bus, they're on the top, probably during the summer, I think we can start to do some of those type of things with some of our harnesses as well. Um, many didn't know about the feed, summer feeding program, so we'll definitely, um, work with them to get, um, food during the summer. Um, more on shared resources, they'd like more communication from us, and more direction on their curriculum. So, the, myself, and Tatiana, and a couple of the other people that were there, kind of key leaders in this summer loss movement, we sat down, we put an action plan together. Um, it would be both to build the capacity of agencies that are running summer programs, as well as build an infrastructure backbone structure to be able to really move forth with a collective impact model, um, here around summertime learning. So that's where we're at with that right now.
We would try to move into an inter-agency agreement.
Yes.
So they would be able to utilize, um, our, our facilities.
Yes.
And the payoff for a three sixty would be for adolescents, they have full support. Part of the problem that we're all having, the adolescents are coming back, not only would it lapse in the academic foundation, but in the scheme and the experiences to relate to the content that they're, they're involved in, and this will provide a three sixty, other than just the schoolwork, so we're pretty excited about doing it. Norwalk does a model that's similar.
Yes.
Um, and people that were there were excited about.
Very, very excited.
Terrence, uh, our, uh, our adult ed coordinator, and summer school coordinator is participating as well, this is going to expand into the high school, as well as the elementary and middle school, so, um, I think it'll be.
Definitely just some workaround data and all those pieces, if we can pull it together and get a real movement going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann, if I could ask just one question?
Yeah.
Any, any hesitancy, any, any concerns as far as ICE and some of the issues?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we had a camp on Saturday, um, we did have a immigration attorney there that talked to the families, there's still a huge number of hearings. Um, so one of the things that Dr. Stahl, under Dr. Stahl's goals, are building trust with the community, we're also working right now as a community collaborative on a grant called Working Cities, and one of the three bucket areas is building trust, because the ICE issues have really impacted these families. I think we've gotten the word out there well through our community messengers and our community brokers right now, that the schools are a safe place. Um, there were some questions about could their child be taken, what did the new administration, um, you know, what were the new laws that were going to be enacted around there, how would that impact families? We have the separation plans, everybody has been coming in to get separation plans, um, so they're, they're coming to us, we're helping them fill it out, and I think that's building trust, that they're, they're feeling that they can come to the schools or to the face center and make that contribution. But there's still that, there's still that fear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. E.
Thank you.
Action items.
That the Board of Education accept the September two thousand seventeen operating results analysis general fund in accordance with exhibit seventeen dash one twenty.
So you have Ms. Alberts, any questions or anything on that?
Joe looking good, from what I see, right?
Yeah, well, okay, as, as the underlying board should also say, there's one million still that's left to transfer into the alliance and priority grants, that's, you're still seeing the operations accounts. The alliance money right now is coming directly to the city, where before it's coming directly to the board, that's under the governor's temporary de-allocation plan, so we haven't made those final transfers yet, told them all how that money did come through and come back to us, so, stay tuned. But yeah, we're okay right now, okay, we're coming, wait for it.
Can I, I think this is a good opportunity to say something to the board. Do you remember the summer we were going through this, and we had the opportunities to cut in anticipation, this, the programs that they thanked to all for the music, and it was, was talked about, and we've left all of that alone, and we didn't, some, some districts went ahead and just cut back in anticipation that, and I thanked the city too, the city has said we would work it out, we'd transfer the money. So I, I think it was really a good collaborative, working together, so I appreciate them working with us, and also, you guys are pushing us to make these cuts in anticipation, because that's what we would have looked at, it would have been a sad day, so I say thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Joe. Joe, what is the final number on the alliance funding, where it's staying?
Well, I don't want to hop into the state budget update, but right now, it's eight point four million, uh, the indications we've had, and some of the documents that are floating around in the last, you know, few hours, and state budgets are six and state at eight four, um, we still have to set up a lot of grants, there's a lot of pieces that are still outstanding, and we're okay, we're, we're tight, it's going to be tight here, which it should be, we, we cut a ton of money, it's definitely going to be a very tight year coming.
Thank you.
Any more? Okay. So second by Andy, will get all there?
Aye.
Ready, votes? Extentions?
Okay. That the Board of Education accept the September two thousand seventeen operating results analysis for grants and projects in accordance with seventeen dash one twenty-one.
Second.
So again, by Mr. Silver, any questions on that for, uh, Andy?
Just thanks Joe for what you do, huh?
A lot of zeros on there too.
I hear you.
A lot of zeros.
Just, just thanks for what you do.
Yes.
Michael too, though, so you know.
Okay, um, second by Mr. Silver, all there?
Aye.
Votes? Extentions? Okay, great.
Bill is out tonight in person, uh, couldn't be here, but Joe, an update, uh, on some enrollment?
Yeah, enrollments is, might as well say, our typical trend about our one percent, we did see a, a small dip in the middle school population, you guys had a, a smaller fifth grade going to sixth, uh, moving in the state, it did drop. We also didn't see a big bilingual number come through our ELLs at Brockish Park, uh, which is why you can see a flat in there. Big numbers in high school, um, coming up the line, and the elementarys, if you look at that bottom line for totals, all nine hundreds on your case, years ago, they were like eight fifty, eight forty, I mean, now you've got big fourth grade, big fifth grade, so clearly those numbers will be working its way through the line, um, you're going to see that, those numbers continue for all the secondary tiers. So back to Dr. Stahl's conversation about portals at West Side, I think that's going to be a deep conversation in a couple of months.
We did, we did do some scanning though, because it was pocket areas where the growth was at.
We did, uh, you had, you had additions at self shelter round for enrollment, uh, we, we got overloads to high school, you've got.
Overload, just for the board, uh, we don't hire a full-time teacher, a teacher teaches an extra period, and that's called, we also have to do that in a few cases.
Yeah, we had two additions at KSI. You had the, um, two additions at KSI, we had a fourth grade and a fifth grade up there over the summer, uh, so we have seen growth there. Middle schools are still flat as far as their growth, but again, no additions there, but high school definitely, they're starting to feel a bulge with their class, you know, even case loads are about hundred, or I should say, student loads are about hundred and twenty, so it's, we're probably.
That's it?
So, Dr. Stahl, if I could ask, any, any concerns at Park Ave? I know we had the, uh, you know, the additions, you know, the additional classrooms, but now I see another bump this year as far as thirty-five additional. Where, where, they gotta be bursting at the seams.
Our grab, when we moved the bilingual out of grade plane, we moved preschool integrated plane, that was a trade, and that's where a lot of those schools picked up students for Park Ave, um, particularly some of the sports staff areas we're seeing is definitely maxed out, and there's no, I'm talking secretarial, nursing, and most of those sorts of areas we're definitely seeing. Thankfully, there's a full-time assistant principal there now, which is helpful, but, uh, you know, we, I mean, all, all those areas are, it's a, it's a, basically, West Side Middle School did six hundred, you're at Park Ave, and they're very comfortable, so I mean, it's a definite area of concern, you know.
And then during the budget process, we're more sensitive to a, some kind of weighted system, because the numbers, we've been able to handle the numbers because we have the sister of the school arrangement.
Right.
Right? Uh, but the, the media, the nurse, to, to all of those auxiliary services are being taxed, so we have to look at that and something, but I think space wise, we're going to have to keep moving down the road with sister school, uh, and we may have to do some module building here too as well. I talked to the superintendents last Friday in the area, there are some considerations in surrounding towns where they may be closing some schools, so I think we have to talk about that, talk about other areas. Uh, we have Sacred Heart that we've coming up on fifth year lease.
At least enrolled there.
Um, that, you know, we need to evaluate that and see what else is available.
Elsworth is another area kind of where the circle under growth, and that was schools built for like three thirty, three forty, if you get the final number, and they're, they're four seventy-two right now, you know, Elsworth is, you know.
Elsworth was a school in your original design that the board had approved prior to me coming here, so it's probably twelve, fifteen years ago, had a second, um, tier, and I don't know why, but when, when I got here, it was single tier, they knocked off to the top tier, which would have been tremendous, yeah, for, to us right now. So she's turned in all of her mini rooms into classrooms, so when you do that, you can't put in twenty, twenty-two, those classes are running about seventeen, sixteen, fourteen, um, so that, and we're full, we're in is full.
Man, Kim Chi, right here, they have big numbers there, you run like six kindergarten's now, and it's, yeah, you're. Max.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, um, I have, I might, I may have put this in the right place, but, and I know we can't do anything about it now, but I think if it comes, if it moves us come January twenty eighteen, it's really, I don't know what we can do to make sure that when children go to school, that it's not overcrowded, our teachers are not working today. And I don't know where we're going to get the money from, but we need a place where when the children go, that we won't be sitting here next to you talking about the nurses are so large, they're overcrowded, you know, and, and we talk about our schools are overcrowded. And I look at Park Ave here every day, I go by there, and we did a lot to Park Ave School, but don't go up in there to try to find a walk.
You have, no term.
And, and it's really sad, you know, and we even went and we go to Denver High School for graduation, now, uh, how, how proud it is, I don't know how we can make this better, uh, as far as land and offering, with children who make food at school, they're not caught and want to, want to try to learn something. And, and Dan there is still growing, I just look at people, how they're moving into town, and it's people that, you know, one couple moved in, and my, the other one, they have four middle school kids. So the thing about the families are moving, I don't know where the other families are coming from, the families are moving into Denver, and they're not having a children, somebody's having children, so, uh, you know, and I don't mean it that way, but, you know, e- every year, as, as I have been sitting here on the board, the last couple of years, we're overcrowding, and we're doing, not passion work, we're doing the best that we can to make it better. But I hope come January, we can come up with something that's going to sound a little bit different, that we can make learning a better process. bit different, that we can make learning a better process for the children and the teachers.
I agree, I think what we're doing, one of the main problems is we're doing the same, you know, we're trying to add more to the same place, I mean, it just doesn't, at some point, it just doesn't, you know, just doesn't work, I mean, but, you know, that's the question, we come to this every year, same thing, oh, it's up again, it's up again, we're trying, you know, but I do, I do understand what you're saying, just uphill battle.
You're getting to the end of line of chopable space, when we chop around, put walls up, and we're getting really to the end of that modify, modifiable space.
Yeah, a couple of schools, I'll talk about my Board chair was a program, I walked him, so we get, I mean, I walk in, and we're walking in and it's like, yeah, so over here, and all of a sudden, on the stage, there's a music class, and I'm like, wait a second, what happened? Scared, it scares me, it's just, it's just everything's, and you got the cafeteria there trying to teach class, and you go in there, it's, it's just, it's crazy, it's really crazy when you think about it.
To piggyback on both of you are talking about, I've been going out to some schools recently, was at Park Avenue on Friday, not Park Avenue, Moore Street on Friday, and coming off of the stairwell, there was some anti-dividers for the ESL teacher in a corner of a hallway. So, in this group, you're absolutely correct, you need to start looking at that, how are we really going to change that? A question I do have for Dr. Sal and for Joe, have we, I'm sure you have, have you spoken to the city, to the City Hall, to see if there are any other buildings that we could utilize in the other locations?
We've, the city owns 76 buildings, and we visited those that we thought we could utilize, and really nothing came out of it that could really use it safely first, and that's what turned us to looking at Sacred Heart. We're currently looking at some other things for some repositioning of some classrooms. Strategically, what we're thinking about doing, what we're thinking about doing is if we could move out some of the programs that don't have to be integrated, and then I'll open up classrooms throughout the district, but what that's going to entail, we close classrooms for entrance in parks, for example. Sister school now may be haystack, and that's it. Well, you got all that transportation. And I want to tell you this, we had buses because of course towns that we're doing, so it will add for some of the building, but again, that is just going to be short-term. You're right, that's short-term. So, we've been talking to the city, we talked to the city recently about the pressures of the middle school and what we're thinking about, which is similar to the expansion we did over at Schuber Rock with the modules. So, we're looking at middle and with an eye on moving classrooms for elementary as we move ahead. It looks like we're stopping at 900 if you look at our enrollment. If it continues going, you may have to build another school. You may have to build another elementary school and, you know, and move it forward and do what we do our due diligence and see what the town says, I mean, that's all you can do. But in interim, we have to provide safe, quality places for kids to live. And we're using hallways again, using stages again, using cafeterias again, re-dividing rooms again, taking offices again, it's just the nature of, and plus instructionally for the Boards, we're doing a lot more small group intervention work, and that requires some movement of kids out and about, so that kind of just kind of exacerbates the space issue.
Well, it's amazing the work that they're doing in the schools, at least the ones I visited, given the space issues that they're having, you know, they're teaching classes in janitors closets and facility closets, and so the teachers and the administrators, you know, we all have a gratitude for the hard work they're doing. I just, again, Ms. Schuber and the Chairperson said is that, you know, we really need to start looking at other options here, and start to utilize all our partnerships with the city, really analyze all that.
We have facilities, facilities being turned up, right? And that's where we'll start this conversation. We're going to contract the same folks that did our enrollment, just to verify, because when we go out looking again, we're always asked about that, and we need it for state projections, just to confirm what it is that they talked about. You know, we started at facilities being, so maybe by budget time, we'll have some idea about some ideas soon.
Thank you, Chair.
You got a couple of, free?
Free and reduced, yeah.
Yeah, as the Board will see, unfortunately, the district is getting poor, remember last year, we were just shy about give or take three and a half to four percent increase in free and reduced lunch numbers. Those are unofficial October 1st, they're postofficial at this point, so 58% total district-wide, with some pretty significant numbers in Moore Street, South Street schools, we do see some pretty significant move up in those, in those areas. A lot more folks putting applications in, which is, you know, I guess, you know, some telling signs of what's going on inside our community at the same.
Right now, all of your elementarys are title one. You went from six to, that was another way of getting some funding. We're going to be challenged with the middle schools at some point.
Yeah, Roger, you marked 72, it's an early, early large number for them.
And the money business would go up exponentially, it's just providing different. But right now, what do we have, 2.2 million, 2.1 million dollars?
2.2 entitled.
2.2 entitled, that's dispersed among those, what was elementarys for, their improvement efforts at the schools proposing to change.
What constitutes?
They have to have a minimum of 40% free and reduced, and if they get there, then we classify it as. One thing the Trump administration is going for is, it was very persnickety in terms of how the money can be spent categorically, they're opening up the gates in terms of how we make look at those funds to invest in the schools, and the regulations will be lesser, so there's more flexibility, it was really helpful to us in terms of spending. That has happened this year. So, if that continues and, you know, if we just keep it at the elementary, those resources are tremendously helpful to the students, but that's how they call it. I got state budget update, there is a little bit of update.
Yeah, I'll go first on Michael's certain way, and what we're at least is, right now, flat funding inside our ECS Alliance Grant. It looks like the city is not losing, but we flat funded as well. The concerning is I do see some cuts or reductions in some of our other grants. Prior, it looks like there's a haircut there, maybe 10% or so, give or take. Accountability, some of those other pieces, I don't see bilingual grant, there's a reduction there, again, can't quantify yet, but it's just some dollars on page right now, there's no detailed runs on those.
The accountability was a million dollars?
No, accountability's 250, extended schools are 250, so we don't have updates on those numbers yet, but there's, that's definitely a continued stretch where the budget is sitting now. We've cut enough, but there's, I'll just say this all year, it's going to be, it's going to be extremely close to the middle, we land a signature. Mike, any other update from the old Delafair?
No, just basically, as everyone's probably heard, since we last met, there is a bipartisan agreement, budget agreement, that is now on the table, compromised by leaders on both sides in both chambers, House and Senate, announced last week, and details, finer details having been worked on over the past several days, the State Senate is supposed to be meeting as we speak.
Right now.
I think they might actually be in caucus, but as we speak, or sometime later tonight, maybe into the morning, we'll say, the State Senate is going to vote on that, and then the House is in tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., so.
So, we have.
Well, we didn't say, the only thing, I mean, in terms of education dollars, the budget is expected to create a new ECS formula, a formula which I believe does benefit our district, because it takes into consideration the population, poverty levels, you know, there are changes there that will benefit Danbury. It will be phased in over the course of, I believe, 10 years. So, although there could be reductions in grants, as Joe said, overall ECS, we would never see a reduction in Danbury over the next several years, including this year, which could be flat funded. Which just to put into perspective, being an Alliance district, we were saved, it looks like in this budget, almost every other district is losing money, not necessarily substantial amount of money, but there are cuts, Danbury will not see. Say two tomorrow, and then see the governor's cuts.
So, just to play it a little bit, if it's signed tomorrow, it goes to the governor, if he decides not to endorse it, then it could be override.
Yeah, so the governor would have basically three options, one is to sign it, two is to not sign it, but let it become law without his signature, which, I believe it's a 15-day period, it don't only do that. And then the third option is to veto it. If he does veto it, then they would have to read the, I mean, we're going to know tonight and tomorrow if the numbers will be there to override the vote. I would like to see based on whatever the vote total is for this project. If he does veto it, then I think you would see, if the votes are there for an override, I think you'd see a very quick, brief meeting session in order to attempt to override the veto. We'll wait and see what the governor does.
Thanks. We have digitizing student records last.
Yeah, quickly, and Kelly Church signed, worked on this project for a little while. We're in process of digitizing our high school key folders, analysis on our special ed documents. The high school file rooms go back to the 60s somewhere of key record, we have to keep them for 50 years, and folks call via copies of the records were approved.
Five zero?
Five zero, 50. So, we have records that go back in 12 to the 60s, so every year, we add a filing cabinet, because of course you can't do any of them, so we actually just now began a process, meaning digitize and chop through some of the records. Once you digitize it, it can have to sit shredded, destroy the record, and then archived for 50 years. So, we are beginning the process now, it's going to go into the summer, it's going to take a while, but it should at least begin to stem tide of file cabinet madness, so there should be some, some goodness there.
For special education records, you're required to keep them seven years after the child graduates or exits high school, so we have an entire room that is consumed with seven years, one of those special undergraduates probably has, I don't know, 20 plus have cabinets, and we're also in the process of initiating.
Yeah, worthwhile endeavor, not fairly, not expensive product, so according to cost, but cost, they actually get personal scanned, right?
Right, right.
But I think we've got a process in place.
Remove the saves.
Yeah, remove the saves. So, if anyone wants their ISO transfer, we'll find them up there when we go through.
Just real quick, and I'm sorry, my project, I'm mentioning this before, it's not a question to ask, but that, just the budget, real quick, I forgot to add, a very important thing for the district that is not in this budget is distributing the teacher pension costs to municipalities, you know, we've talked a lot about that, I just forgot to mention that because I wanted to.
1%.
You got 1%?
That's, yeah, but in terms of that one, or proposal by the governor, that is not, and that's one. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
We're going to have a presentation, do you need this on here?
Yeah.
No, you can.
I'm being right off. Yeah. I should have stood up.
Okay, we have a big concern there, because there's one of 32,000 slides, so.
Suddenly.
Exactly, we're not going through everything now. See that's just a quarter of it, uh-oh.
All right.
Thanks, it's magical, Joe.
So, what I wanted to give you a little bit of a quick look at today for tonight was where we ended up with the hiring, the little bit of effort that came were on the first page. To give you some perspective, in the last couple of years, we were probably doing anywhere from 125 to 150 new certified staff. This year, we settled in just under 80, so it's considerably less than where we ordinarily are, but it does represent about eight to 10% every year of our existing workforce. We are just over 900 teachers, so with about 80, we're looking at this year about 8% of turnover. And you'll remember, without going into a lot of detail, we did move some teachers who were coaches into classrooms, so we did pick up some extra slots there, so there's been some movement. So, tonight, I'm going to talk really about the staff that came in, new hires, people that we have not had before, I call them the class of 2017. So, to give you a little look at the numbers, again, very female-centric, and that's driven largely by the pool of applicants we see, it's about three quarters to one quarter men to men or women to men. This year, about 11% of all of our new hires were Danbury residents, who at the time that they're hired, and 4% were Danbury High School graduates, not in the certified camp, but in the non-certified hires, I have a Danbury High School graduate working with me now, and we're to follow a spot, and it's just, it's fun, it's fun to watch her, kind of seeing how things were on this side of the fence, and I think it's the same for Danbury High School graduates or teachers as well. About a quarter of those we hired into full-time certified teacher positions have had some connections over the Danbury Public Schools in some capacity. They might have been interns or student teachers, they might be tutors, special ed tutors, they might be these interventionists that we've used, or long-term subs. So, about a quarter of them are people that we've had some experience with. We made a big push this year to really try to make sure that people were not settled into permanent positions in buildings where they had had long-term subbing experience. So, in other words, we're trying to really build this capacity around the district of good solid teachers and putting them in buildings where they may not have had experience yet, so that we can bring in some new people into, into buildings, and that really has helped break some of this, this feeling that, you know, you have to have a job in the district in order to get a job in the district. So, that was a big push that really happened centrally from Sunny Waters. Just under 20% of our teachers that we have this year have already attained tenure in another district. That means that they have at least four years of experience teaching, at least in Connecticut. So, 20, about 20% of our hires are people who have taught before and have got some longevity in another district. I attribute that this year to the fact that we did quite a bit of content related to hiring the high school, physics teachers, math teachers, and those are people that are real hard to find, it's hard to find good quality people to fill them, and so we tend to find people higher up the scale with more experience, which I think is what drove that 19% number this year. This one sort of surprised me a little bit, just under or just over 25% reported themselves as fluent in another language. Again, huge priority for us, that we have folks teaching in the. Again, huge priority for us, that we have folks teaching in the district who also have an ability to communicate with some of the students in other languages. So that was actually a really interesting number this year. And then 6% were identified at these educational job fairs. You'll remember from last winter, I gave you a presentation about the minority hiring initiative that we've been undertaking. And we've done a lot of work in job fairs. And these were folks that we identified very early on and brought them in early as new hires from those job fairs. To give you an idea of where they're coming from, I tried to look. Connecticut colleges, no one else left. But we're seeing a real diverse number of schools. Winnipeg, Yale, Compton College, Albert Smith's local, Notre Dame Valley local. And then quite a few from New York in the middle column. And then a little bit further field. The diversity of colleges and universities represented was really tremendous. We still continue to see high numbers from... We continue to see high numbers from Westhorne and Southern. We see quite a few from Sacred Heart now and University Bridgeport. Again, all schools that many of our current faculty have connections to. They have teachers there, and we have identified students that would be good candidates for us as teachers. So we continue to build those local connections. But you can see that we're starting really to attract a following from a variety of schools. Turning for a minute to ethnicity. This has been, continues to be a big push for us. We pulled, and the graph rounds up numbers, so it's a little bit off what we pulled. About 19% of our new hire class this year are self-declared minority status. That's, you'll see in a few minutes, that's a big number for us. So 19% is one that we're proud of, that that number continues to grow. Interestingly, a little bit of a new trend for us this year. This blue box is Hispanic, and the red box or red slice is black African-American. Those numbers were about the same this year. Again, a little bit unusual for us. And it represented an increase actually in our black African-American hiring and a little bit of a decrease in the Hispanic population. This is the chart that I think really illustrates a balance of whether the... My red guy here is a little bit persnickety. The top line, purple line, is showing the trends in 2014, when I first started making presentations to you on our hiring. And you can see, we had a bit of a dip last year about our overall number. We have the numbers really starting to go up dramatically. And again, the numbers aren't huge, only talking about a pool of about 80 teachers. But that number again is definitely going in a direction that we're happy with. We're going to continue to grow and expand on that. We did see a decline in our Hispanic hiring population and increase in the black African-American numbers, where they meet actually with the equivalency of 2017. And I think that's owing to two things. One is really we've been making a push toward increased attention to our hiring initiative. And also, this year, we have, we did, for whatever reason, less hiring in PSYOP coaches in things that typically will draw Spanish-speaking or Portuguese-speaking candidates. So that may also explain why that number went down just a little bit. But I think overall, it's a trend that we were happy with this year, and we're going to continue to build that next year. This gives you a little bit of perspective. One of the things that I talk a lot about is the goal and the place where we're trying to head toward is having our teacher population reflecting our student population in terms of demographic. There's lots of things we try to do to build that. There's lots of things we do to compensate for not having the equivalency. But you can see right here, just as this is from 2012, a little bit of perspective on how our numbers have changed over the last couple of years. So, let's start with the left-hand chart, which is really just a pie plot of what you just saw. So the blue number is 46% roughly of our percentage of students are Hispanic, self-declared. And again, the numbers are a little bit wonky because there are many students who will adopt more than one minority status, so dual, two or more minorities. And so those numbers, we have to kind of parse out a little bit to try to get the pure, purest number we can. Then we've got this red box here with our black African-American students and our Asian students here. Now, this is really what we're talking about, when we're talking about trying to have some closer parity between the demographics of our teachers and the demographics of our students. And you can see, we're making some gains in some areas. But again, predominantly, our teaching force is still over, well over 85% awake. And we're continuing to try to mirror this here. One point of interest, and I'm not real sure how it cuts, but I did take a look this year at our non-certified paraprofessional group. Now, that group's about over 400 members. That group, interestingly, is 40% minority, 20% Hispanic, just 114% African-American, and 5% Asian. So again, those numbers are actually really starting to look more like our student population. So the trick, I think, as part of our moving forward and what we'll be doing next is to try to focus on that group of our workforce and see if there's anybody in there that is interested on a pathway to teaching, because that's some of where we've got a built-in group to work. So, this is sort of interesting, gives you a little bit of perspective about the rest of the state and the country. Nationwide, the numbers from last year really reflect about an 18% minority teacher makeup. And looking to Connecticut, the most recent data available right now is 2015, 16, where 8%, just over 8% of certified staff statewide are identifying minority status. In January, we had nearly 19% of our new teacher cohort from 2017 class come in. And 11% of our certified staff are identifying minority status. So we're definitely running ahead of Connecticut numbers, and we're running a little bit behind nationwide historically. But our new classes come in, and we're definitely in the right direction. Again, this shows you kind of in a bar graph. What I think is interesting, the blue column here is the state of Connecticut, 14, 15. And this yellow one is 15, 16. And you see that the composition of the minority teachers is really staying fairly level. We've seen some really nice gains in Danbury. The red column is 16, 17, and the purple column is 17, 18. So you can see we're running well ahead of the state. And also, these numbers are definitely increasingly moving in the right direction. So we're starting to mirror a little bit more the state numbers. A continued challenge for us is who's in the pool. So we are as good as the applicants that we're luring in to be there to apply, who are interviewing, who are selecting. And again, there's places where the numbers really are lagging. And part of it is the population coming out of some of the teacher cut programs, which is why we're going to be expanding our search to some other schools. But you can see, this is demographic information that we pulled out of the applicant pool. So I look at all of the applicants who apply for a particular category and then rank them up by EVO or equal opportunity status. And you can see, again, these numbers, particularly in elementary education, we're seeing a lot of these young, young white candidates. And we're continuing to try to talk to the state and try to brainstorm about how to help improve the demographic of that pool. We saw some interesting notables again here with just the composition of the pool. There are, we're doing something right, and we're trying to harvest that for next year to really see if we can continue to build on those keys. Shortage areas, again, not a big surprise in the T-Saw, teaching English as a second language and bilingual groups that are drawing fluent language speakers who tend to identify with minority status. So that's why these numbers really do a large difference in terms of applicants. This year, we did see a spike in minority applicants for secondary content areas, particularly in math and biology, which is interesting, and I'm not quite sure why, other than it may be people tell people they know, or we've just done a better job of advertising and really turning over some stones for a more diverse Connecticut pool. So that's been a nice observation this year. We continue to look at teacher retention. We're not seeing big numbers of particularly minority teachers leaving. Again, we're not seeing anything out of the ordinary this year in terms of resignations. We have our typical flight right at the end of the year for districts that are smaller than we are. That's going to continue to happen for us. What helped us a little bit just in terms of flow was starting after Labor Day. It gave us a little bit more time to regroup when we lost teachers at the last minute. But we haven't seen big flight numbers out of the district in terms of that retention number. And big gains as well in the administrator group. We've attracted a tremendous number of very high-qualified applicants of all colors, all diverse groups. And our minority composition of our administrator group, our principals and other working coordinators and administrators is 17%, which is considerably higher than our teacher population. We're going to continue on what we've started. We're going to continue to support minority hiring into open positions. We've got a nice opportunity with some interventionist spots this year that we're putting in as our TaOa money solidifies a little bit. That's a good opportunity for us to try to bring in some more people who are certified and help with that work. We're also continuing to push with long-term subs. For whatever reason, we have a lot of people going out again this year for illness or other absences. So that's another good opportunity for us to begin a devotional with candidates and try. Continuing to support the State Department of Education efforts to expand the pool of talented educators coming out of teacher preparation programs. And we're also continuing to try to build what we call the cultural responsive educational practices. We're doing some professional development in that area. Continuing to work with our teachers on how to engage and essentially really engage in effective learning with kids who are of a different demographic. Again, continuing to look at the same kind of goals for next year. And again, you know, as Joe's saying, we're not quite sure what the budget brings us for next year, but we can, I think, count on that roughly 8% to 9% turnover, both with teachers changing jobs, but also retirements. So we'll continue to see that. We're going to continue to try to at least focus on that group and see that we can bring the most qualified, most diverse operation of teachers that we can as a district.
Any questions for Kim?
Kim, how many, so for elementary school, how many applicants per position?
We typically get up to 300 for an elementary school spot. Some of the, you know, some of the harder to fill areas like physics.
Right, yeah, that's...
But the elementary spots, definitely. Especially, it continues to be shortage area. We're having some troubles still.
Well, I would say on average, 40 applicants per spot. Yeah, we tend to get more applicants. We tend to get like 65 to 70. But when we weed down who is actually certified in that pool, it's usually around 40 or 45. And a predominantly female population.
Anyone else for Kim?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to say before, I came straight from work, so I put it in my home and grabbed the flowers I got for Ms. Cooper from the board for congratulations on being honored the other day.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Some water up here, if anybody wants to.
Lot of presentations today. All right, so we are, information, it's just our information.
I did, I did. Just turned to the memory I mentioned last time, the calendar, starting after, after, starting after Labor Day. And if you look at the calendar here, we're going to attempt to do that, 17, 18, and 19, 19. One of the things we are doing, taking advantage of trying to look at the commemorative holidays and lessen the pattern of coming to school and then releasing and then having a half-day. So one of the things that we're considering next year and following year is to look at our Columbus Day holiday, which is a commemorative day, and making that a professional development day and releasing students for the day. That gives us, in the past, our PD days were in, for example, in September would be the weekend before this year was on Friday, and the kids were off, and teachers are off on Monday. So this would just combine Monday as the PD day, but the youngsters still would be off. It does impact the end of the year, so it lessens the amount of time we go into the year. If you look in June, without losing any days, we're actually through on the 13th by making some of these moves. Day before Thanksgiving, we had been giving a full day, is now a half-day. In February, we removed the day after 18th, which is President's Day. The kid, everyone will be off on the 18th, but come back on the 19th, so that has two days off. So we're attempting to keep more continuous time for school. Other things here is we do have some contractual challenges regarding our support staff working on one of those days. But there are what they call shoulder days and other things that we'll try to work with. But that is one of the challenges we're doing this. So this is the 18 and 19 calendar, which is also pretty reflective of the, of this, of the two-year calendar by using those dates. Anything, Kim, or...
No, just that, definitely for our non-certified people.
Districts around us, some go Columbus Day, some have SPD. Many of them go Veterans Day, we do not, right? Mostly, everyone is off on the same Tuesday of Election Day. We need to be off because our schools are used. Some don't have that challenge, so they could go to school, you know, they could move things around. But we've tried to take advantage of some of the things that we were, the Savior stays. And the April vacation, we tried to include the Good Friday in the time. Instead of disrupting two weeks, it's one week that we were able to reduce. So we tried some of those things to achieve the goal of having more continuous days. It still has those Tuesdays in there. I know those of you that were at the debate heard someone say, the group up front were talking about trying to do PD for folks, and people have to be at the cutting edge of things. And that's when you do that, on these Tuesdays, one-hour dismissal. And we've tried to keep them, they're the yellow ones on here, pretty much continually, you know, the same two days whenever possible. You don't want to have two dismissals in one week. So that is in there. This has gone out to the unions and everyone, and we'll come back for a vote in December. So we tried to listen last year, we're talking about using some of the options in the calendar for commemorative days.
You tripped a lot in, that's just our information.
Yeah, that's our information. That's, you know, we went through it, and we told criteria. This particular one's going, this school's out anyway. But they still have the assurances that we want to be sure to have. So that's, that's still going, you all know. So, yeah.
So could I, could this, a proposal for 2018?
18, 19.
18, 19?
Yeah.
Is there a typo? Because as I look at January... 2018 and January 15, that's about noon at the king's birthday. So we're closing school for early dismissal and celebrating on the 2nd of Earth?
Let me see, 18, 19.
This year, we could generate January 19. The calendar on the day, right, would be the 19th.
Okay, not this, yeah.
Should have followed speed.
19, 20.
Correct. No, 18, 19. But it would turn, January 1 would turn into 19 rather than 18 on your calendar.
Thank you for having me sing the eight.
I had the same thought. Okay.
Have a rip.
Easter Christmas is a Tuesday or not?
Any other questions on the, anything about the calendar? No?
Let me just, I just saw that you told us closely, there might be one thing I just want to mention. I don't even know why we gave that day. No, that's not weird. Okay, that's it.
All right. Or chairperson's report. Deb asked me to ask if there's anyone going to the KIM convention. Has anyone voted, mentioned it?
Real tough one, so.
Are people going?
I booked them to hold them because they were literally going fast. I could relax the race.
Brad's going to go for one day, so he don't need an overnight. So that, could you make sure that she gets there?
Michael's going to try to go.
One day, not stay overnight. He'll do the night table, okay? Okay, so that's amazing.
I'm going to ditto that Friday.
Okay. There's three of us, so I can always cancel if we have to, but I want to hold.
And also, she asked me to ask, I mentioned last meeting about what we're going to do for the annual meeting, where... And also, she asked me to ask, I mentioned last meeting about what we're going to do for the annual meeting, where we want to have it, we want to just stick with the high school, I think, or? No? You got an idea, Ms. Cooper?
No.
Jan Barby's where we go?
We had a nice place last year, so, you know.
Uh, West Side was?
West Side was nice, it was ample parking, or, or most good, but the high school was just too congested to go in there.
Chili's, baby, man.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be good for another? You want to try West Side?
West Side.
West Side, West Side.
Okay. It's fine with me?
It's sort of like Tim Roper's.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Tim Roper Barbie will be. Okay, and also, this one, a couple of schools, I was at, Barney, myself and Fred were at the thing on music on Monday. Great presentation. The kids did a great job. And also, I went to a couple of schools on, a week, a couple Mondays ago, with South Street, Shelter Rock, and, where was that one? A I S, and I went to Reach, Denver. I checked on the three elementary schools since their new principals, everybody seemed to be getting, you know, making it away pretty well. And that's why I've got, South Street's where I was startled by the band, or the music class on the, in the stage there. It's a difficult place. But what, you know, that's something that I said to Ms. Cooper said earlier, when you, in schools where we're crowded, you actually see it. It's, it's actually, it's a crazy thing to think. I might think back a long time to when I was in school, I mean, it was like twelve kids in class. I mean, and it was like, and you had your music class, and you had your art room, and you had your, you know, and it's, and it's very similar demographic in size of where I grew up, to Danbury, but it's just, I don't know, it's just, but what I always say is, and it always comes back to it, is teachers, I mean, they're happy. The vibe that you get from these schools are just great, especially new principals in the building. They all seem to be coming along really well, and it's, it's, I always find it rewarding to go and actually see what's going on. But that's it, I'm on end, and the, anyone else, you know, living in the business of schools, family, university, whatever, the family can. Want to comment on that?
I know, the very interesting meeting a couple of weeks ago, where all of the different, I went representing, these states, there have been different people and all the demonstrations, I'm not speaking, I'm sorry. And so I said, and then we're going to make a calendar with practice so that everyone knows what everybody's doing all the time, so we have more participation. That would be the most simplistic way, wouldn't it sound? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, I certainly would like to acknowledge Kathy had texted me a message, and you know Kathy's always here, and my husband is not doing it, so it's just hope everything will work out for her, because we miss her, we just.
I agree. Did I have any visits or anything else?
I mean, I spoke about it earlier, but I got, I went to Shelter Rock, I went to both middle schools, I went to Haystown, North Street, and DHS. And all have different challenges. Most of them have the space issue, they don't have enough space. But what I did get was a sense of professionalism from the folks that are there. They love their job, and they're passionate about it, they're passionate about the kids. And you can see the happy faces on the kids when, you know, they see the principal walking around, so the kids give them, oh, I got a hug from a, from a child who was happy to see somebody new in the building, you know. But I was just, it was overwhelming to see how these people are really passionate about what they do. And I think the lesson that I got from that, and I will continue to go out to the schools, is that they would like to see the board come out and visit the schools a little more. I think that shows them that we are with them, we're behind them. And I think that just, just our presence there helps, helps them. So whatever we can do to keep supporting our administration, again, are those challenges that they're facing, whatever we can continue to do to help them, their staff, that's what I got. How continue to go out as well?
Thank you.
No.
Okay, you mentioned it.
I guess Kim should.
No, I think the next one.
Okay, the next one.
All right, so the motion to adjourn?
So.